All right, so welcome, everyone. This is the regular city council meeting for Minatrista, June 7th, 2021. And our first order of business will be to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Any volunteers?
I can do it, Mayor.
Otherwise, all right, thanks, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. So next, we'll do a roll call and introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And also present this evening are council members Pam Mortenson.
Here.
John Chumperland.
Here.
Ann McGregor.
Here.
And Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
And staff present, we have our city administrator, Michael Barone.
I am here.
Community Development Director, David Abel.
I am here.
And Finance Director, Brian Grimm.
I'm here.
We have our Director of Public Safety, our Police Chief, Paul Falls.
I'm here.
And Director of Administration, Ellie Pauls.
I'm here.
All right, and our Public Works Superintendent, Gary Peters.
I am here.
And our City Clerk, Chris Lindquist.
I'm here.
And our consultants with us this evening are City Attorney, Ron Beatty, with Kennedy and Graven.
Here.
And our City Engineers, Allison Fowski, with WSB.
Here.
And our Assistant City Engineer, Adam Gepwah, also with WSB.
Here.
Great, so that can, I think that's everyone. So with that, we'll move on to approval of our agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
This is Kathleen, I want to talk about the consent agenda item D.
Okay, we'll get to that in just a minute, and we have a long list, so keep that in mind, and I'll ask you then. Good, yep. So otherwise, if there's no changes, additions or changes, then is there approval for of the agenda as presented?
I'll move, this is Pam.
Okay, Pam made that motion, is there a second?
This is Kathleen, I'll second.
Thank you, Kathleen. So motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Ms. Refkin. All those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Whelan, vote aye. Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chumperland?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Tonight, we don't have any special presentations, so we'll move on to persons to be heard. Mr. Barone, have you received any emails or letters that need to be read?
Madam Mayor, I did not receive anything today, so I don't have anything. There could be potentially somebody in our virtual audience, but other than that, I have nothing.
All right, thank you. So is there anybody in our virtual audience that would like to address the council on something that's not on the agenda? All right, I think most people might be here for the public hearing or some other issue. So now, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Kathleen, you said you wanted to remove which one now?
D.
B or D, I'm sorry.
D is in dog, the special assessment.
Thank you, okay. All right, approve updates to special assessment policy, we'll remove that. Are there any other ones you wish to remove? All right, hearing none, then, the consent agenda items will include: A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May 17th, 2021; B, is approved the city council regular meeting minutes from May 17th, 2021; C, is a resolution to approve claims. We're going to skip D for now. E, is a resolution to approve change order number two for the Sunny Fields Water Tower Maintenance Project; F, is a resolution to approve a step increase for Mark Klein, who is our Public Works Maintenance Worker; G, is a resolution to accept the resignation of police chief, uh, police, I'm sorry, Sergeant Michael Kokish; H, is a resolution to accept resignation of our police officer, Joshua Brown; and I, is approve a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone of PID number 20-117-24-23-0001, located at the southeast corner of County Road 92 and West Highland Road. And it also, I, one, is approve a comprehensive plan amendment for the same PID; and I, two, is an ordinance, 466, rezoning PID, same number. And I, three, is a resolution to authorize publication of ordinance number 466 by title and summary. And our last one on the consent agenda is J, approve stormwater maintenance agreement by and between Park Place Storage condominiums and the city. So our motion to approve those with the exception of D.
This is John, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Is there a second?
This is Ann, I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. So with that, we have a motion by Mr. Chumperland, and seconded by Ms. McGregor, to approve consent agenda items. Can somebody mute their phone, because I'm getting a lot of, it sounds like paper backdrop noise.
Area Stonebridge Road, Circle and Loring Drive have the same assessment at nine thousand six hundred and four dollars. Hardscrabble Road North and Circle is at seven thousand nine hundred and six dollars. And Minneapolis Avenue is seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. So basically we'll be holding a, let me talk about, sorry, the interest rate here. The, the as bid project cost for the total assessable portion is two point one seven seven eight four nine point five two million. And that's the total assessable costs. And again, the, the part that's being levied against the benefiting properties is the nine hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. The assessments to each parcel are levied for a twenty-year period at an interest rate of three point two five percent. And each property that is being assessed was sent a letter that included amortization schedule detailing that assessment. So right now I will have the mayor open up an assessment hearing, which would be for the council to hear and consider any objections from the, the properties proposed to be assessed and then adopt a resolution adopting the final assessment role for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Guebwa. Alright, so I will open the public hearing this evening. And if there's anybody, and I'm gonna start, so we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak, you are gonna have to say your name and address for the record. And I'm gonna start on Stonebridge, Stonebridge Road and Circle. If there's anybody on Stonebridge that would like to speak or has an issue or concern regarding the assessment. I'm not hearing anybody, so I'm going to move to Loring. If there's anybody here that has an issue or a concern or an objection for the assessment on Loring Drive, you may do so at this time. Okay, I don't think there's anybody there. So now I'll move on to Hardscrabble. If there's anybody here on Hardscrabble that would like to address the council regarding a concern or an issue or an objection regarding the assessments for Hardscrabble. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody there. So now we'll move on to Minneapolis Avenue. Again, if there's anybody on Minneapolis that would like to voice their opinion or objection or concerns regarding the assessments for Minneapolis Avenue. Alright, I'm not hearing anybody jumping up and saying anything. So I will close the public hearing and take it back to the council. And the council, if you're in agreement with the assessment role that was in our packet, this would be the approval of adopting the assessment role for the 2021 local street improvement projects. Any questions I should ask first? Okay, and is there a motion to adopt assess the assessment role for the 2021 local street improvement projects?
This is John, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Is there a second? Oh, Kathleen. Okay, Anne, I think Pam beat you to it, so we'll give it to Pam this time. And then all those in favor will signify with aye. I'll start with John.
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
And Anne?
Aye.
And Kathleen?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Lisa, motion passes five oh. So that concludes our public hearings this evening, and we'll move on to our business items. Our first business item is approve a class three preliminary plat with variances at four thousand Enchanted Lane. I'm gonna hand this over to David. I believe Mr. Robinson, as we found out earlier, is present. So David Abel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, the Band Core Group has applied for a six lot subdivision with variances for the property located at four thousand Enchanted Lane. As the council may recall, you did approve a comprehensive plan amendment back in February of 2021. The amendment changed the future land use designation of the property from park, public, semi-public to residential low. The property at that time was zoned R1 low-density single-family residence, and it still remains that zoning now to this day. What that comprehensive plan amendment did was it brought the future land use and zoning into compliance. And the amendment also marked the initial presentation of the applicant's intent to subdivide the property. The request is a preliminary plat, as the mayor said. There are, are six lots being proposed, which includes a variance from the required one-hundred-foot lot width minimum on the street side for three of the six lots. The property is a total of seven point seven five gross acres on Enchanted Island, and the property does have wetlands, floodplains, and includes some right-of-way dedication, which reduces the buildable area to six point zero six net acres. As I mentioned, three of the six lots require a variance to the lot width requirement. Sewered lots in the Shoreline Overlay District zoned R1 require a minimum lot width at a building setback and the ordinary high watermark of one hundred feet. During the review of the comp plan amendment in February, the applicant had shown two options to subdivide the property. As the council may recall, there was an eight lot plan that would require the installation of a cul-de-sac, which would add additional impervious surface to the site. The eight lot plan would not require any variances from city code. There was the six lot plan shown at the comp plan review as well, and it did note at that time that the three lots would need variances. There seemed to be consensus among the council for the six lot plan with the variances as opposed to the eight lot plan that would conform to city code. The applicant's proposal consists of a two, two lots less than a conforming plat, which will keep the density down and help maintain the rural character of that minestrine values. Having less lots also allows for less runoff, runoffs and helps protect the view sheds on the lake. It should be noted, one thing that's new from when you looked at this during the comp plan, obviously they've done some survey work and preliminary plat work. And what that did is brought to light that there were some encumbrances on the property from the neighbor to the southeast, east or southeast, east of the property. There is a shed and gravel driveway which encroaches onto the property. Of course, we recognize this issue and understand that the applicant intends to address the issue at the time of the final plat. To our understanding, at this time, the applicant will sell a portion of four thousand Enchanted Lane to the neighbor to the southeast that has the encroachment. This is depicted in one of the attachments that's attached to your packet that the applicant provided for us. To process that request, the applicant will be submitting a simple subdivision and a lot combination at the time of final plat. Moving on to looking at some tree preservation for the site. As the council may recall, subdivisions that result in five or more units are required to protect all significant trees that are not needed to be removed to allow the reasonable development of the property. We require at a minimum that seventy percent of the total caliper inches of significant trees in the property be protected. This comes from city code section five ten oh seven. If the caliper inches of the trees to be removed is greater than the allowed thirty percent, the required replacement trees will be a one, one inch per one inch replacement beyond that thirty percent allowance. In cases which has demonstrated that a property cannot accommodate additional replacement trees, as the council knows, we can ask for that a hundred dollar per caliper inch dollar amount that would go into the city's tree replacement environment enhancement fund. As you'll note from the packet, the applicant's submittals, they do have a tree list and preliminary landscape plan. The plan does include the existing trees, proposed removal, and it shows significant tree credit areas as outlined in the report. Extra protection provided for significant trees does allow the city to consider a double credit for those areas. With the credit, the applicant does exceed the required tree preservation by two hundred and seven inches. Now, the applicant has explained how they intend to go above and beyond to protect the especially as significant trees for which they're asking double credit in their narrative. The city council should consider these measures when reviewing the tree preservation requirement. If the council feels the applicant is indeed going above and beyond to protect the significant trees and is acceptable to the council, nothing needs to be included in the recommended action with the review tonight. Should be noted, the planning commission did spend a considerable amount of time discussing the tree preservation components to this request and allowing that double credit as proposed. And ultimately, the planning commission did recommend allowing the double credit as the applicant is requesting. The commission ultimately voted five oh to recommend approval of this plat with variances. That was done at their May twenty-fourth meeting, and they did hold a public hearing during that meeting as well. The Parks Commission has also taken a review of the application. They did that at their May eleventh meeting. They recommended that the city council required cash in lieu of land in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as the park dedication for the development of this property. So with that, in conclusion, this is again a preliminary plat with variances for a six lot subdivision at four thousand Enchanted Lane. There is a resolution in your packet for consideration. The next step if successful would be to move to the final plat and subsequent simple subdivision and lot combination, as I mentioned earlier in my report. I'm certainly available for any questions, and as the mayor mentioned, and we all saw, Paul Robinson, the applicant, is with us this evening and potentially has a presentation to share with you as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. So first, does the council have any questions of Mr. Abel? I want to give Mr. Robinson an opportunity too as well to do a presentation. But do you have any quick questions for Mr. Abel at this time? Because we can always come back.
This is Anne.
Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
Okay, this is a question out of ignorance. I don't know much about any of floodplains. But with the flood, with the drainage system that you're gonna set up, do you have a fair assurance that the floodplain is gonna be handled?
I'll, that would be an engineering question, I guess. Or Mr. Robinson, can you, do you happen to know that or have an answer to that? Paul?
Sorry about that. I did, I do think Adam reviewed it if he's on the line. But we, so what, what we're required to do is to make sure that any floodplain area that we, any area of the floodplain that we are filling, that we provide that same volume of compensation. So it's compensatory storage on the site. And so what we've done in areas where we filled the floodplain is we provide other areas where that volume can be stored on the site. And I do have a slide that kind of explains that in my presentation.
Yeah, I looked at it. Thank you.
Alright, good. Alright, if there's no other questions right now, then I'll hand it back to Mr. Robinson, and he can do his presentation, and then we'll have time after that again for questions. So Paul, you wanna give us?
I'll do that. I'll turn my camera on just so you know that there's a human back here.
Alright.
Mike Barone needs to give me the ability to share my screen.
Okay.
Well, I wish I knew how to do it, Paul. I, I don't. So I'm looking at it as I, I sent you a quick email and.
There's a little button with a screen that probably has a cross through it. Diagonal cross through it. If you click that, it should allow you to share it.
Okay, where am I looking, Ally?
Down the bottom of your computer screen.
Right, no, I see that. I, I, that's how I share my screen, but I don't know how I share his screen.
Well, you just have to give me the ability to share my screen.
I see what you're saying. If you click on his name in your people.
Okay.
There should be an option to make him a presenter.
Alright, we'll find that.
Maybe right-click or.
Okay, you're in.
Oh, look at that. Okay.
It's Ally. Learn something new every day.
No problem.
Okay, hold on. I'm just gonna have to organize these windows that popped up here. Okay. Alright, I think David did a nice job describing or summarizing the presentation. So my name is Paul Robinson. I'm with the Band Core Group, the five four three three Dupont Avenue, South Minneapolis. David is also with me this evening. And I will go through with some speed through our presentation, basically trying to bring to life the presentation that you, you see in your packet. As David mentioned, we have about six acres of property on the site, six hundred and fifty-five feet of shoreline. This has been a camp that the masons have owned since the nineteen forties, and it's zoned and guided for low-density residential. When we first initially bought the property, we looked at the floodplain for the FEMA map, FEMA floodplain. And we knew there were some areas indicated for floodplain. And recognizing also that the floodplain for FEMA is lower, it's nine, I'm gonna say to talk about it in a minute, but it's lower than the floodplain that's required by Minnehaha Creek. But when we did a survey of the area that was currently in the floodplain, it was larger than we initially had expected. But the area that we need to show or we're required to show is nine thirty-one point five. It isn't necessarily that this whole area actually floods. The highest recorded water level is nine thirty-one point one one on the lake. So this is sort of a, a real big backup plan for floodplain mitigation on the lake. And what we're basically doing is following the strictest rule, which is again from Minnehaha Creek Watershed District of nine thirty-one point five. So what we've done is we've created these sort of holding areas for the water that would come into that floodplain area on our property. The green areas will get, will start to fill with water when the lake gets above nine twenty-nine point five. And so there's an equalizing pipe in this arrow area. So when water starts to fill in here, it equalizes and fills in the back floodplain mitigation area at the same time. And these areas are all designed to hold up to nine thirty-one point five. So just to put it into context, like this year and many years, the lake starts at about nine twenty-nine four, which is the ordinary high, or drifts above that a little bit as the, as the snow melts. And often in a normal year, the lake slowly goes down and can often be six inches of foot or two feet lower in the fall. Now, there's lots of exceptions to this rule, but in general, you know, it's, it's, the lake is often or most of the time below this nine twenty-nine five. One of the things that got brought up at the comp plan amendment during the comp plan amendment process was a comment about a, an eagle's nest and, or a nest in the area. And so we sent out our ecologists to do a study, and they did find a nest a couple doors down here, this big red dot. The, we, we didn't completed that nesting study. We contacted the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And along in the short of it is, we were told that we did not need a nesting disturbance permit for the, for the construction activity that we are proposing. Again, when, as David mentioned, we brought forward a eight lot plan and a six lot plan as a part of the comprehensive plan amendment process. We did feel like we got some guidance from the council that the six lot plan was preferred. But for a number of other reasons, we thought that it had less impact on the neighbors. For the most part, there's still just a home on each side, and there won't be any homes that are viewed along Enchanted. So we think there's a better presence. There's fewer overall units. There won't be a road that needs to be installed, so there won't be that, that long-term maintenance, the ongoing maintenance of snow plowing. There's less tree removal, and so with all these factors together, we felt like this was generally a win-win for the project. I'm just gonna, this is that, I'm gonna talk about this a little bit later, but this is that area that, that David was talking about, that where we are gonna carve out this red area from the, from the final plat to accommodate some, some items that are kind of in this red area, and I'll explain that a little bit more. But just so you know, when I'm going through the rest of our presentation and explaining our plat, this will become an area that gets removed, but it still keeps, our plat still is in compliance, and there are no additional variances required to accommodate this. So just looking generally at our site, the basic minimum lot size in the shoreline area is twenty-three thousand square feet. All of our home sites that we're proposing are, are greater than that. So these lots are between thirty thousand and sixty thousand square feet. If you look at that in context to the neighborhood, then our, our lots, obviously in that thirty to sixty range. And if you look at the adjacent lots within four, you know, four lots in either direction, that's in that eighteen thousand to forty-five thousand range. So I think that, that helps to just show how we're fitting into this context of the neighborhood. If you look at all the other setbacks and the lot widths in the neighborhood, we have, we are, we're meeting the hundred-foot requirement at the ordinary high. We're meeting the hundred-foot requirement at the front setback, which is seventy-five feet from the ordinary high. We're, we're almost meeting in every instance a hundred at the angle point, which is not a requirement, but we're just showing it to kind of give you an idea of, of how the, these lots feel and look. And then finally, the, as David mentioned, we have the variance request for the three lots at the rear. We meet, we meet there, the thirty, for thirty-five feet from the road, we meet the hundred-foot width on three of the lots. And we are asking for variance on the other three. So all in all, we're meeting the vast majority of standards and setbacks, except for those three with the rear yard, street side width. And if we look at that in the context of the neighborhood, it's, it's a lot like the three flag lots situations that are to the east of the property or to, or next to the property here. And, and also in large part, this is because of just the characteristic of the property as it's sort of pies to the back, which is just something that, that we inherited with the shape of the property, and because these lots doing the six lot plan are so long. And ultimately, this variance accommodates reduction in the overall density. There were some comments about drainage in, as a part of the public hearing, and so, and we said, we explained it as we got moved forward. So currently, we have a number of ponding areas that are behind the, the six lots that take the drainage that comes off the back of all of these lots that ultimately, if these ponds fill, would go into Lake Minnetaka, much like most properties and like this property drain generally. Most of the properties on the lake eventually drain to the lake. But we also worked with each of the neighbors to address sort of the lot lines and the lot line issues that we shared. We're on, over on, between us and Bruce and Carol Olson, we're going to be removing their retaining wall along the property line and then blending our two home sites together at the elevation of the top of that wall, and then creating a shared swale to help the water work its way toward the lake between our properties. On the northern part of the shared lot line, we're gonna be bringing as much of the drainage as we can around this large silver maple. We'd like to save it, and Bruce would like to save it as well, so. So we're trying to do that, and he has an evergreen tree. The Olsons have an evergreen tree right on the lot line here, and they would, would prefer we don't grade around that. And so he's fine accepting some of the drainage that may occur along this part of the property line in order to save his tree. And so we, we've had a very good working relationship with Olsons, and I think that will continue through our construction. The adjacent to Pam and Steve Anderson, we've been working with them about the drainage along their wall. We still have, we're still discussing some of the fine details of that. But in general, we've created an area where we have a high point along their wall that will help to bring water to the rear and to the lake. The existing topography along this wall is kind of bumpy right now, and so it does, this area does not drain that well. And so without impacting, you know, if we don't impact any of the vegetation that's existing along the bottom of the wall, there is a point where we're not going to be able to solve a hundred percent of any water along this wall. But I think we'll be able to do a good job of taking care of the vast majority of it. And then we're also gonna be working with the owner, whoever buys lot six, to either install drain tile or create a swale to help improve this drainage situation between the, our properties. In the back of, as you go to the back of their property, there's a long, long driveway here that for the most part has always drained into the camp property, and will continue to do that. And it'll be captured in this flood mitigation area, which also doubles as a pond. One of the, this came up during our public hearing, but it also is a state statute that requires us to do some investigation, because there was, this, the island is considered an alpha site, where there were some human remains found on the island in the past. And so we needed to do a paper research, doc, of that document and other documents on the lake. Once we did that initial research, we created a plan for, our archaeologists created a plan for investigating the site for potential for burial mounds. And that was submitted to a number of organizations, the agencies, and they approved it. That included the Indian Affairs Council, Historic, Historical Society, the state archaeologists. So they all approved this plan. The first step in that plan was to do a geophysical examination, where you actually go around the site to look for areas of high potential where they can gauge without digging subsurface disturbance. And so they did that, highlighted a number of areas, which we followed up with probes and shovel testing across the site. And through all of that testing, there was no evidence of any burial mounds found. And so at that point, we stop any further work or investigation, but we are putting together a monitoring plan. So we will have an archaeologist on site during the time that we're grading, in case we do run into a burial mound, which we are not expecting. But if we do, we would have a contingency plan in place that would be approved by these agencies to handle that. And then one of the last items is.
Paul, can I ask, can I just ask a real quick question regarding the grading? Are you gonna do custom grading per lot, or are you gonna do all the grading at once? How are, how are you gonna do that?
We're, in order to make sure that we're handling all the drainage and the floodplain mitigation, we basically need to grade the whole area at one time. Otherwise, it puts a lot of onus on each individual property owner to try to grade it correctly to make the site drain and handle.
Okay, alright, okay.
So, so that's our, and to that end, which is a good segue into tree removal, you know, a number of the trees that are being removed are these kind of gray trees are in the building pad area or in the areas where we're doing floodplain mitigation. The saved trees are, are in large part around the perimeter of the site, except for these three areas of especially significant trees, which we worked around to save that are a little bit more interior to the site. And then in addition to that, we're planting about fifty trees to help create a nice presence as you enter the site, but also to help buffer the site around the perimeter of the site. And then to that end, as David mentioned, we are exceeding the caliper inch rule by about four hundred and fifty-nine inches. We're planting a hundred and thirty-seven inches, and then we're asking for the credit for the trees saved to make up the rest of that inch replacement requirement. And so the two areas we're asking for is this one credit area. If you, in our initial plan, we had a driveway coming up and through these woods here, and we had a floodplain mitigation that looked, that was much more like the eight lot plan, where it was a little bit longer and skinnier, and it kind of impacted a little bit of this woodland area up in here. And we moved, kind of made this a little bit more stout, fattened it up a little bit here. We took the driveway and pushed it all the way over to the side. And by doing those things, we were able to save this, this whole corner. And then the other benefit of saving this corner is it also helps provide another buffer to that eagle's nest, which is two doors down. So, so this is the credit area, one that we worked to try to preserve. And then we'll do all of the typical things that are on the plan as far as putting up tree preservation fence and trying to keep our grading as much as possible away from these trees. And then the second credit area relates to lots one, two, and three, where we likewise, we moved the driveways. We had them actually originally more centered in each lot or a little bit to the other side. We brought those around this, these trees. We steepened up the grades so we could keep more of the grading away from the trees. And so you can kind of see, we kind of snaked this driveway between the trees. And so we're just trying to work with the land, work with the existing trees to save a couple of nice clusters of especially significant trees in this location as well. And then just touching one more time on the area of land that we're going to be selling to the Andersons. This area has a wall in it that's kind of about halfway up the property. Has some landscaping along the. has some landscaping along the wall. There's a shed back kind of in this red area. And so we're going to, this, this sale allows the Andersons to keep all of those elements and make, and ensure that they're on their property while also, while keeping our, our plat still in compliance with what we're, what we're presenting tonight. So when we come back with the final plat, this red area will be gone. We'll have a, in addition to our final plat, we'll have a simple subdivision, which, which subdivides this portion of the property away from the remainder of the camp. And then we'll have a lot combination proposal where we'll be combining the red area with the Andersons' current lot. So there'll be a new lot, basically created a larger lot for the Andersons once we're done. And so that's really the bulk of my presentation. This is a, just a super quick review. You know, we have the six lake lots, the stormwater treatment areas, our floodplain mitigation areas, the home pads that we'll be creating. Those were the driveways will come in. We've, here, we're showing the existing saved trees more with their actual canopies and the new trees that we'll be planting. And so all in all, that is our presentation this evening. And I'm available for any questions now or when is convenient during your deliberations.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Nice presentation, lot of information, good information. It's always, you, you always do a great job. You and David Newman always do wonderful developments and I have complete confidence in your abilities here. So having said that, a couple of things I really like is the fact that you're working closely with the neighbors. I know we haven't heard anything negative, so that's really good. And I know you'll continue that as well throughout the process here. So I'm just going to make a comment and I'm going to hand it back to the council. I do think you've done a lot of work here and you've done a great job. I'm, I'm very pleased with the six lots versus the eight, not only for runoff and hard, hard surface, but just because it will really fit in with the neighborhood a lot better. And the fact that there's three lots that don't have the hundred feet at the road. I think the narrowest one is like just under fifty-eight or fifty-six feet or forty-six, whatever, that's still plenty and ample room for a driveway, in my opinion. So with that, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good plan. But I'm going to hand it over to the council and ask if you have questions or comments. I will start with John.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The, I appreciate the, all the information here. I looked through it quite a bit. I know the planning commission certainly did a lot of work on it. And a lot of answers in here that I had already questions on. But the one I didn't see that I do have a question on is the ponding areas. Are these areas that will always have water in them? Or will they, from time to time, drain out? And if so, who's responsible for maintaining them? Is that the owner of the lot they're on or how is that handled?
You want me to respond?
Yes, Paul, please.
The, they are filtration ponds. And so they are, while they will have water from time to time, they generally will, will not have water. So they'll look more like wetlands than ponds. And then the maintenance requirement, you know, our ideal was to have each owner do the maintenance, kind of keep track of the maintenance on their own. In your packet and your staff recommendation is to have us set up a homeowner association to maintain these.
Okay, so that, I guess that's what I was getting at. So that someone does take ownership of them because I know how these things can, over time, kind of get out of mind and out of sight. So I appreciate that, as long as that's documented somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, Pam?
Um, let's see, I agree that the presentation was very thorough and very good. I also appreciate that you are working with the neighbors because that's, makes it a lot easier for all of us when you do that upfront and get an agreement on all parties. The drainage, that, I'm glad to see you're addressing this. And John, great question about the ponds and the homeowner association. I'm glad you brought that up because that was a really good question. So other than that, the only thing I thought of is the driveways. Having six additional driveways going into Enchanted, that doesn't seem to be any kind of a problem with anyone?
I don't have a problem with that personally, yeah.
None of the neighbors or, okay. So I was just curious about that, but other than that, it looks great.
Okay, all right, Kathleen?
Hey, thanks. I agree, that's a great presentation. I am sawed at the planning commission meeting, so it's great. I have a question about the, the trees. So when you cut out the portion to give to the neighbor, how does that work? This might be a question for David. How does that work with those saved trees going for his tree coverage? If he cuts out that area? Because it looks like a good portion of the saved trees are what's going to go to the neighbor's property. Does that make sense? How does that affect the tree coverage area?
Did we lose David?
No, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm here. Well, we'll still, yeah, I mean, we're going to, it, it's going to be kind of a timing thing and we'll have to look at that with the applicant in terms of, you know, like we said, we're going to subsequently run the simple subdivision and lot combination with the final plat. So we'll, we'll have to take a look at those numbers again and figure out what is the best solution. It likely could end up going potentially, i- i- going away. But again, I guess we'll just have to look at this up, you know, the process in which it's, it's going through.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, good. And Ann?
I, excellent presentation. I had initial worries about the floodplain, but in reading the presentation before, before Paul's presentation tonight, it looks like it's really been handled really well, so no problem.
Okay, yep. And then just a question for the council. And I, I know Kathleen, you were at the planning commission meeting. They had a lot of discussion regarding the extra credit for the trees. Are we okay in that department? I, I'm fine with it. It sounds pretty, like a good, like a win-win situation for everybody. Is that, you're okay with that, everyone, Pam? I'm fine with that. And John?
Yes, I'm fine.
And Ann?
Yes, fine.
Okay, and Kathleen?
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're looking for a, it's called a preliminary plat approval and for, for the subdivision. And let's see, it would be a class three preliminary plat with the variances, as discussed, at four thousand Enchanted Lane. And along with the preliminary approval, there's thirteen different conditions that staff has laid out. And if you're in approval or in agreement with that, I would entertain a motion.
Kathleen, a motion.
All right, Kathleen made that motion and a second was made by Pam. Pam, thank you. All right. So a motion has been made by Kathleen and seconded by Pam. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those will signify with aye. Aye vote aye, Lisa Whalen. And McGregor?
Aye.
Pam Martenson?
Aye.
John Chumperland?
Aye.
And Kathleen Reskin?
Aye.
Motion passes, five oh. So we'll look forward to the final plat then, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, all right. Then we move on to our second business item and that's approval of the Lithromway sewer agreement. Oh, is that Ron or who, who's going to take that one?
This is Ron, it's probably me.
All right.
Madam Mayor, council, this is the culmination of something that started, I guess, a long time ago. I guess the real beginning of this is the nineteen seventies when this area was developed. The sanitary sewer that was installed was a private line, not taken over by the city. And it's been maintained and repaired and so forth by the property owners since that time. About a year and a half ago, the property owners approached the city to ask if the city would take it over and relieve them of that obligation. I, I remember them coming to the council and it was in person. So that sort of dates it sometime prior to March of two thousand twenty. And we've been working on it since then. The council indicated that it was open to doing so under certain conditions, that the line be inspected and any problems be taken care of and that the property owners bear the expense of putting together whatever kind of documents and agreements that would be necessary in order to do this. And there has been both legal and engineering costs. You can appreciate this as a somewhat unusual situation because it's not real estate that is being transferred. It's these folks' ownership interest in the sanitary sewer line. So what you've got in the packet is an agreement that my office has prepared whereby these folks do convey to the city their interest and the city would agree to take over the line. Obviously, that's beneficial to the property owners because it relieves them of that obligation of maintenance. The, the staff also feels that it's beneficial to the city because this line does not exist in isolation. It connects to the city's line. And so it directly affects the city's line. Staff feels that both from an eye-to-eye perspective and long-term maintenance, it makes sense for the city to have control and be able to maintain and repair and take care of this line. And so we feel like it's a, a win-win situation. And so the, the pack of material indicates that we were expecting a final set of executed documents from the property owners. They, they were not included in the packet because we had not received those yet, but they actually came in today. So if the council is agreeable, we actually, and approves this, we actually have the document executed by the relevant property owners and the city mayor and the, and the clerk. If council goes forward with this, would be authorized to execute this and affect the transfer.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, so this came to the council a couple of years, maybe a year and a half or so ago, maybe two years ago. And the council said, well, one of the thoughts that I had was, so the people on Lithromway, they pay sewer charges. And part of our sewer charges are for maintenance and repairs and ultimately replacement. So it just made sense that we own the sewer line as well, since they're essentially paying for it. But, and does council have any other questions or comments? I'll, I'll go to John first. I think you and Pam were here when we discussed this initially.
Probably just an observation or a question, I guess, and maybe it can't be answered. Is this, I take it this is a hotity. Are there other places in our city that, that individually the line is owned by the residents?
Um, Ron or David, I, I don't think so.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any. At least, you know, in the eighteen or nineteen years that I've been city attorney, I don't recall this coming up before. But perhaps Gary could answer that question better.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is Gary. No, there are no other lines that are privately owned that tie into our system. The only other private road that we have with the sewer line is Eagle Bluff. And that is part of our city's infrastructure.
We own the line, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
And it sounds like, sounds like we've done our due diligence that we're not taking over a section of line here that will immediately need a great deal of work, even though they, in essence, have been paying for any future work. But it sounds like, Gary, you've looked at it. Your staff have looked at it and it's in good condition.
Yes, part of the stipulation was they needed to clean the line, have it televised. We had, they had hired our contractor, which we trust, who's been doing our work for many, many years, came out, did the work. Myself and Adam have viewed the line video. We had to have one area that I wasn't concerned, but after looking at it, we can see it was repaired back probably when it was installed. There's no issue with that. Other, other than that, everything looks good.
Okay. And Ron, one question. It's noted that two, two landowners who have halt lots are not signing the agreement. I mean, I guess it's straightforward enough. They're not actually using the system. So there's no legal ramifications that everybody who's in that area has to sign off. Is that correct? That's correct. The, the original position that we had taken was that we wanted to make sure that everyone in the neighborhood was of a like mind. We did not want some people in and some people out. And that, that made sense going forward. It turns out this individual did not want to participate. She doesn't live in the neighborhood. She owns, owns a couple of outlots. And I think there was some other things that were going on. And we, we initially thought, well, maybe that would kill the deal. But upon further reflection, because neither of the properties that she owns has a house and therefore doesn't use the line. In other words, they're, they're outlots and they're not utilized. We concluded that that didn't make any difference and should not derail the deal. I mean, I suppose the legal analysis is that she is not conveying whatever interest she has in the line to the city. But I don't think that that's a risk because if, if the, because what would happen? If the city went to repair the line, would she intervene and say, no, no, I don't want the public to pay for this. I want to have to pay for that. It, it just doesn't seem like a realistic approach. So we concluded that that should not kill the deal and we're comfortable going forward without her signature. Okay, thank you, Ron. Those are the only questions I had.
Thank you, John. Pam, anything?
Um, no, just one question about, how long is this line anyway in length?
Maybe about fifteen hundred feet. Gary? Gary, do you know?
Yeah, I was just trying to look it up. Yeah, it's probably roughly, I would say, the max would be twenty-five hundred feet.
Okay, okay.
Not very long at all.
I just didn't see it on here anywhere, so, okay. Other than that, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with this. I, I do appreciate also, like John said, that Gary, you did, you know, do the due diligence and everything looked good. And it looks like it's a win-win.
Great, okay. Kathleen?
No, I don't have any questions, John. Ask mine, so I'm good.
All right, thank you. And Ann? Ann, are you there? We can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. No questions, that's fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so is there then a motion to approve the Lithromway sewer agreement?
This is John, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. And is there a second?
This is Kathleen, a second.
Thank you, Kathleen. So a motion has been made by Mr. Chumperland and seconded by Ms. Reskin to approve the Lithromway sewer agreement as presented in our packet. All those in favor will signify with aye. Kathleen?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa. Motion passes, five oh. So next, we'll move on to our professional service agreement for Jennings Cove Park reconstruction. Is, let's see, David or who, who wants to take that one?
Madam Mayor, this is Gary. I'll be taking this one.
All right.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you. What we have in front of us tonight is the- What we have in front of us tonight is the need for the reconstruction of Jennings Cove Park. We've discussed many parks in the past. Gene Lanier has been come up in the past. That one was passed over because of the E D requirements. We have Friendship Park that is in need, and we've kind of chosen Jennings Cove due to age and also with the upcoming road project next year, it's probably good timing. The amenities of the park were installed from what I can tell on plans between nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-six. There are two separate containers for the swing area and the playground. There's also a fencing closed basketball slash small tennis court, along with a picnic table, a single picnic table area. Playground equipment and the P rock, fall protection that are in the containers no longer meet the current playground safety standards. They really do need to be upgraded. The playground and the swing area would be redesigned. The sport court would remain that's there. The fence meshing would come down. There'd be, there is presently, there is a plastic type of a tile court on there right now, like a colored tiling to give it the court look. That would also be removed. We would take care of that in-house to save some money. The probably first one would take down the fencing. The post would stay, so we just would need new mesh. We would also remove the tile, save quite a bit of money. It's just, you know, kind of odds and ends stuff. There are also going to be six to eight large green ash trees that are in the park. Four of those right now would need to be removed for the reconstruction. Looking at it, you know, my discussion point could be the, there's some very unmaintainable berms there that don't look all the best, and with, you know, the unfortunate Emerald Ash Bore that is inevitably going to be here, do we look at taking them all out now? Do we save some of them and wait? We have already planted some trees in there to, you know, in early, you know, restaging of it so that they can grow. Here by ten are gone. But that's something to think about, but there will definitely be four of them that will need to be removed for reconstruction. I'm sure that we'll come up with a planting plan when everything is done. Access and trails and containers now would all be ADA compliant, which all parks would have to be when they reconstruct it. I did meet on site with one of the playground designers from WSB to look at the park, to kind of get some, just kind of a rough design, some cost factors. And that's what they had sent us the professional service agreement that was sent to us and was attached here. The Public Works staff received a rough breakdown also of the cost of the reconstruction, and this is just an estimate, assuming that the Public Works guys removed the fencing, the sport court tiles. Court equipment, we are talking about the existing tennis court kind of posts that are there. We're going to opt to take them out. The tennis court is not truly a full-size tennis court, and just looking at what the mesh looks like where they have put the wires through to hook it up, it's very, if they wreck it there, it's just not designed for that. We cannot take the fencing down because of the location next to the pond area. There's a quite steep little hill there, so that is why the fencing is around there is, I'm assuming, when it got put in. So we would take care of a lot of that along with the trees coming down. Estimated construction cost was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, broken down, as you could see, you know, by different areas with the removals, you know, that there's some other shrub removals that would be there, the new trails, the new fence, the court, the play areas, of course. So along with the eighteen thousand dollars, which should be the scope of services for the reconstruction, the design, the construction overview and that type of stuff. So the fiscal impact of the whole thing will be paid through the park dedication fund. So tonight, we're kind of looking for recommendation for approving the proposal for professional service agreements with WSB so we can start the design and bidding process for Jennings Cove Park.
Thank you, Gary. Sure, so just one thing, when you're working or whoever is going to be working, if WSB is doing this, as Kathleen mentioned earlier, we then should have a plan with and without that exterior trail or the trail leading to the park, so that when the homeowners association gets back to us, we know we already have a plan with or without it. So then, the other, yeah. My only other question is this, do we want to engage the association and just ask them what or not? I don't know, is that a good idea or not? What amenities they want in the park? I don't know. I guess that might be a, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, David can maybe answer us too, as we're both aware, David knows too. There are so many different types of playgrounds and structures out there. The choices are immense. I mean, there's a huge book of the different ones. I think we kind of look at the neighborhood, maybe if we want to take a survey, see what the age group of the kids that are out there, to give us a little better idea of, you know, do we look for, you know, that, you know, five to ten-year-old, we look for a seven to twelve-year-old, maybe something like that would be a good way to do it, but, you know, there's just so many out there. I don't think it'd be a great idea to let them pick the equipment. David, what do you think?
No, 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 I wasn't saying that. I just, I think the age group thing might be a good, a good thing, because we would hate to put in, you know, equipment for three- and five-year-olds, and most of the kids are six and ten kind of thing, you know, so just.
And there was, and there was a lady out there who had her kids there, and, you know, they said most of the kids, a lot of them do use the basketball court, which we'll keep, you know, that's, you know, that's given.
Right.
What we're planning to do with that is the tiles will be removed. We would actually, it's a beautiful concrete surface under there. We peeled it back, it's unbelievable, I mean, it's a perfect condition. It would be cleaned up, and then we would paint the court on that, like we have in other areas. She also said the swings are a huge factor, you know, and then, you know, like you say, it would just be a matter of, yes, what kind of playground, I mean, is there even enough? Maybe we could do two smaller units, you know, for, you know, maybe a smaller one for the toddler ages and one for the little older. Maybe there's enough room to do both.
Yeah, okay, all right. And then just, I have one more question and then a comment, and take it or leave it, it doesn't matter. Is the sport court large enough for a pickleball court? I don't know that that.
It would be striped for one pickleball court, yes. It is very, it is large enough for that. That is what we, we had discussed that, because that is one of the most popular things around, so that is something that we would have striped on there also.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. I'll start with Anne. Any questions or comments?
No, not many questions.
Okay, Pam?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. I do like the idea of just getting a consensus of what the age of the kids are in the area to go with what type of playground equipment. Are you talking about doing this still this year, or is this a project for next year?
No, this would be this year, yes.
Okay. And that's, and that's good, working, then if the road projects get passed in that area, having the playground done would be good, because then the roads would be done the following year. I agree with Lisa on pickleball, that's a huge sport right now, and I think we should if we can add that. And I think that was about it.
Okay, great. Kathleen?
I liked Gary's idea about the two different type of playgrounds. If we can make that work, one for the littler kids and one for the bigger kids, just based on my experience at playgrounds in the last eight years. It's nice to have options, you have little kids and big things, especially that it's a neighborhood. And then just, I would say, make sure we put in the most swings we can for the area, because, like you said, the mom, the swings are a big hit, they're a big hit in our neighborhood too, and they're always busy, so making sure we put the most in that we can for the area we have with the compliance and everything, that would make the most sense in my mind. But otherwise, no issues really.
Okay, good. John?
Just two things. One, I have people there that I know, and I've been at that park more than once. I think the demographics there are far ranging. I mean, there's, there's young people with young kids, and there's people with grandkids there. So I think trying to have a park that meets everybody's wishes is going to be tough to do. That's why I would not necessarily be in favor of opening it up to the homeowners association. I think you go with your, your best general playground setup that can meet some of the requirements of far-ranging group. Pickle court is certainly a thing that's not only for us oldsters, but for other people as well. And one other thing, if we do, if we do tree replacement, if we do decide to put some back in, I would be in favor of, even though the cost might be small, of taking that out of the tree replacement fund versus the park fund in that.
I agree, yep.
Okay, because we look like we have good dollars in our park fund, but we know we have some parks that really need a lot of work as well, so that's it.
No, I think that's a, that's a good comment and a good idea. I would agree with that. The only other thing I would say is if you can save two of the ash trees now, just so that they can create a little bit of shade while other trees are getting larger, and then we take them down a little bit later, if that's an option, at least look at that. But I think it's a good idea to use our tree preservation fund for tree replacement, so. Okay, so anything, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, are you in favor of approving professional services agreement for the Jennings Cove Park reconstruction?
Lisa, this is Kathleen, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
With regard to the playground equipment and that, how does that work? Do, does Gary and WSB then just come forward with which one they think is best? Do they present the council with option, like four options of, we think these are the best for? Like, how does that work exactly if we don't involve the HOA, and then who would make the ultimate decision on the equipment?
Ultimately, it would be the council, but you're, you're correct. How, do you bring options forward, Gary? Do you know?
David, what did we do at Douglas Park? That was the only one that we've done so far since I've been here. Did we bring back one, or, I mean, I know that was small, just like this one, is it, or what did we do with that?
We'll work up a design with the designers at WSB, and we'll put it out for quotes. And as Gary alluded to earlier, there's so many different designs and options out there, it'd scare you, it's unbelievable how many there are. So each vendor's going to submit to us a quote, a quote with a design, and we'll bring those quotes with their designs to the council for ultimate approval.
Okay, so with that, Kathleen had already said, you know, lots of swings, so keep that in mind. Kathleen, anything else?
Well, as, we heard, you know, hearing that, and again, I mean, we'll work with the designer on the, you know, on the confines of what we have in terms of spacing ADA and those types of requirements. And at the end of the day, you can only fit so much into a square box, and so certainly we'll, we've heard what you've said, and we'll, we'll ask them to accommodate those as, as they can.
Okay. Kathleen, anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions before we do a motion? All right. Is there a motion to approve professional services agreement for the Jennings Cove Park reconstruction?
So moved, this is Pam.
Thank you, Pam. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
All right, a motion has been made by Pam and seconded by John to approve the service agreement for Jennings Cove Park reconstruction. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Pam?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Anne, Anne?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five oh. So next, we move on to our Trista Day discussion. Mr. Barone, I think that's you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm also going to have Chief Falls chime in here in a minute. So we spent a little bit of time talking about this last week, and after we found out that the vendor of the pig races has, has some issues with, some medical issues, not him personally, but his family member, and so he basically told us that he would not be able to work with us and provide pig races for a September Trista Day. So after we discussed it with staff, I do know that Chief Falls has the National Night Out coming up in August. I wouldn't say that the only reason we have Trista Day the last few years was to feature the pig races, although it's been a highly successful partnership with the, with the group. But our preference, and I think Chief Falls can probably give some additional information, Chief, we decided that it would, and will recommend to the council, that would probably be a good idea not to do Trista Day in September, and then turn around and try to plan another one for next May. So our preference would be just to move forward with skipping it this fall and just planning on doing the Trista Day again in 2022. And Chief, if you want to give a couple of comments here, I think would probably be appropriate.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Barone, Mayor and Council. That was a great summary. I think, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces here. Certainly, when we first canceled Trista Day for 2021, we essentially entertained the idea of maybe the possibility of doing it later in the year, primarily due to the pig races, certainly not the only reason. But with that said, there's a lot of other factors involved here. I've had some discussions with my staff about the availability of many of the other vendors that come to Trista Day, and we kind of have them locked in for May event period, time period, but September is a whole different animal, and so our fear is that many of them are not going to be available. And as we saw earlier on the agenda, we are going to be extremely short-staffed, which is going to cause us some pretty major issues until we get some new staff on board. So it is my recommendation that we just let it pass for, for this year and pick it up again in May at its normal scheduled time next year. We are planning on having National Night Out, so that will go, and we'll do whatever we have to, to do our best to make that happen with the staff that we have.
Yeah, I, you're right, with that, the two officers, one retiring and one moving on to a different police force, that really does make it difficult to stretch our staff. That's true, yep.
Yes, we're, I met with the command staff today, and we are, we'll be okay until school starts back up, and then we're going to be, that's going to be a tough spot, but at least at that point, we'll be much closer hopefully to, to getting some new staff on board, and we'll go from there. But we have all we can do to just continue to cover what we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Pam, do you want to weigh in? I know you've been, you know, you've been involved with the pig races and so on.
Yes, and yeah, it's unfortunate that the pig race owner has some family health issues that are pretty severe, so. I do, one question I have is, we did talk about, because weather has been an issue in May for the last couple of years, we talked about maybe removing it to June. Is that something we could look at for next year?
Mayor, Council, I think we absolutely could, could do that. We have certainly plenty of time. I agree that the, the weather seems to be more stable in June, so that might be a better fit. Originally, the event started out as a public safety open house, and so that's why it was always planned in May in, in tandem with Public Safety Week. That's why it was initially or originally planned that way, but since it has developed into Trista Day, and it's not just public safety, that's, that would be completely appropriate, I would be fine with that.
Okay, that's just my suggestion, because weather has been, not just for the pigs, but for, just in general, the cold weather and, yeah.
Cold and rain. No, I'd be on board with the June, with the June event. I have another suggestion, and that would be, so we have a, a new picnic shelter that's almost done, I hope, done pretty soon, at, at our, that's almost done. I hope done pretty soon at, at our largest park in Minatrista, Lisle Park. And I was wondering if the park commission could put together a little event, um, a ribbon cutting and some type of a, uh, event that would include children and families and whatnot. Something like maybe an ice cream social or face painting, just something to, um, encourage people to come out and enjoy the park and for us, you know, to do a ribbon cutting and something like that. Is that, it wouldn't have to be expensive. It wouldn't have to be, um, a huge event, but this would also give the park commissioners an opportunity to help coordinate, um, at least getting started a small event. And we've talked about that before, saying maybe the park commission could be a park and event committee versus just a parks commission. Is that something that council would entertain?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Kathleen?
Yeah.
Okay. And Pam? I, I'm in favor of it. Okay. And John?
I'd agree. I know we discussed a few months ago about expanding, giving them a little more responsibility and that they don't have to meet real often. So I would agree with that.
Okay. So what I would suggest we do is have the park commission meet, um, even if it has to be a special meeting, maybe sometime mid, mid-June or some, I guess staff, you can figure it out. But, um, again, it shouldn't take too much planning. We'd want to advertise it though. Um, and I do know we have a newsletter coming out pretty soon. So it might be something nice to put in the newsletter. So if you could put your heads together and figure out a, a date and then, um, figure out when you want to get together with the, uh, Parks Commission and kind of dole out responsibilities. Is that doable? I'll ask Mike.
Uh, Mayor, you know what? We will, after hearing, uh, all five, uh, council members, including yourself, uh, say that this is something you'd want to do, uh, staff will work on that and try to bring something back. Um, I'm not exactly sure if a June, uh, meeting would work. Um, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is you'll hear when we start talking, uh, when I get to my staff reports, um, uh, the council isn't even meeting in person yet. And so I think this would probably be a good meeting to have, be an in-person meeting. And so, um, I would say maybe July or something would be a preferred, it gives staff a little bit more lean, lead time to start preparing on how this will work. So, um, and, and so if you're, if the council is, is okay with that, we'll try to bring something back. Um, maybe at the next meeting, kind of discuss plans, but maybe plan for a
Okay.
July meeting of some sort. Um, and like I said, gonna have a few comments here under staff reports. It should make a little bit more sense. So.
Plus, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor and Council, if I could just jump in here, this is David. I, I, and maybe Gary, Gary can jump in and, and you alluded to this too, Mayor. Um, I, you know, we obviously, ribbon cutting is a great idea, but in, in, and you alluded to hopefully it'll be done. I know there are still some minor things that need to be done there. And obviously we'd want it to look as nice as possible in terms of grading and grass and, and, and those sorts of things. And so I don't know how, how soon or, you know, we're, we're, it's very warm right now. It's dry. And so getting grass to grow and those types of things. Um, Gary, I don't know if you want to chime in. You've seen the site much, much more than I have recently in terms of how, i- is that something? Maybe it's more towards the end of summer, fall, or how, how soon of a turnaround do you think in terms of getting, you know, people out there to, to have it looking nice, if you will, for some sort of event like that?
Yeah, everything's, you know, the tables are in, we've got everything inside, the, the brickwork's done, yeah. But we have not had anything, we kind of holding off on doing the final top dressing on the black dirt and seed. We are not running the irrigation out there. Um, it's, it's, I know it's really dry, but, uh, we're running into some water, uh, demand issues. So yeah, the longer we can wait, probably the better it's going to be. I mean, it doesn't look terrible right now, but, uh, you know, I'd hate to have it, uh, you know, get seeded up all of a sudden, turn everything on and have it all trampled. But I mean, it isn't terrible right now, but to wait, if you want to look in really prestige, you might want to wait a little bit.
Yeah, it could be end of August, maybe. Um,
Sure.
And we can talk about dates. We can look at that too, as we, um, as you talk about it. So, okay. All right.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, we'll move on to, um, staff reports.
Oh, oh, one second, we start. Um, can I, just quickly, um, going back to Trista Day, um, I will go ahead then and send out an email to all the sponsors telling them that they will be getting refunds, uh, for, uh, their sponsors, being sponsors. And, uh, that should go out by the end of this week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Great. All right. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Otherwise we'll move on. All right. Staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, I've got a number of items and there's also a couple of other staff people that are going to speak. Uh, Ally will speak and Gary will speak, but I'll start. Um, our next meeting is June 21st, which is two weeks from tonight. And then the following meeting is four weeks after that, since we do not meet, uh, the first Monday in July. So the next two meetings are June 21st and July 19th, a gap of four weeks between those. Uh, generally in June, uh, moving on to my next item, we start our internal budget process. And I think the mayor mentioned at a previous meeting not that long ago about discussing the fund balance. Uh, I know Mr. Grimm will be on vacation for the July meeting and we're already talking here about, uh, bringing back information, uh, for council to discuss budget, which will probably be at work sessions in August. So with that being said, we'll probably add the discussion of the fund balance at our next council meeting, which is the June, June 21st meeting. And more than likely, uh, we've got a couple of other items already penciled in for that night. Uh, so we'll probably end up having a 5:00 PM start to the work session at our next meeting. That's, I would pencil that in. We'll confirm that here, uh, as we talk in our staff meeting tomorrow, but that's probably going to be the game plan. Um, and then speaking about meetings, um, the governor is expected on June 14th to discuss whether or not to extend his emergency order. I've heard that he's going to, I heard that he's not. I've kind of heard both. I think he's going to extend it, but nonetheless, I think we're getting to the point now where it will be good for us to, uh, start getting back together in person. And so I'm kind of looking for a little bit of feedback from each of the council members, but I want to earmark the July 19th meeting is our first in-person city council meeting, I guess, since March or February of last year. Uh, we do have a few things that we have to resolve. Our, our camera and microphone system hasn't been fired up and used in a year plus. Uh, we do need to work with our, uh, media company to, to get a technician. Generally, these kids have been high school, college kind of kids. And, uh, since nobody's been coming here for a year, we need to make sure we have that lined up. Uh, we want to, uh, like I said, kind of get a tune up on our system. But it, does the council have any objection to going back to in-person city council meetings, starting on our one and only, uh, council meeting in July, on July 19th?
I, I don't have any, yeah, I, this is Lisa, this is Mayor Whalen. I, I don't have any objection. I think it would be great. It's always nice. This is convenient at home. You can sit in the comfort of your home. But, um, there are some drawbacks to this. And so I, I do think eventually we're going to have to go back to in-person anyway. And, uh, the 19th seems like a good plan to me. Um, I think there'll be some issues we may have to work out. Um, and we'll, we can talk about those. So,
Yes.
But council, are you on board with that? I'll go, John?
No problem.
Uh, Pam?
No problem.
Okay. And Kathleen?
No problem.
Okay. And Ann?
No problem.
All right. You got your answer, Mr. Barone. All right.
Much appreciated. And like I said, if the governor does rescind his order, um, I will be able to come up with a whole bunch of reasons, including the ones I just cited as to why we will not be ready for the, the June meeting, uh, the June 21st meeting as an in-person meeting. And the reason that's important is that we no longer have a local emergency order and, but we could attribute the pandemic and other things, um, as reasons besides the IT and technical issues I talked about. So, um, if anybody's going to have to get a, a, a knife wound on this, it'll be me as the administrator, not you as the council. Um,
Okay.
Few other items. Uh, just a quick update on the Southwest Water Tower. We did have our meeting last week. Uh, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Peters and I participated in that. They're working on the water main connections near the, the highway. They're, um, on, uh, moving the, the tank is being, uh, moved on site in pieces and they'll be working on that at the end of June. And they expect the tank to be lifted up, uh, sometime mid or end of July. So they'll be, you'll be seeing some more stuff going on out there. Um, Ellers and Associates, which is our public finance, uh, uh, group that we employ, uh, they are sponsoring a three-part public finance education series for elected officials. And if any of our council members are interested, you can either let me know now or send me an email. There are three virtual meetings. They'll be in the evening for one hour, 6:30 to 7:30, and they'll be held on June 23rd, August 18th, and October 20th. So like every other month. And I will send out all these materials. I have them, uh, sitting here on my desk, but I will scan and send those to city council member probably tomorrow. And then you can let me know, uh, if you're interested. I think it might be worthwhile to better understand some, some of how the public financing, uh, stuff works. Um, next item, we will have a personnel committee meeting this week on Wednesday at three. We hope to finish up our discussions regarding our negotiations with our sergeant and lieutenant union. Um, and we'll try to get a red line ready for the June 21st. We believe they'll probably be, uh, interested in approving a contract. I think we made a little progress. Uh, we also have this week, a broadband meeting. We have a pre-meeting with, uh, Lisa and Ann from our council, our attorney, and then Ally and I, and, and we're going to kind of game plan for the Thursday meeting with Mediacom that's being held here in person at our, uh, police station at 10 o'clock. And I think those are all the items I have. Uh, I do know Ally has two items and then Gary has two items. So Ally?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Um, kind of piggybacking off Mike's, um, in-person council meetings, the majority of management staff in city council have received a city laptop for in-person meeting use. Um, I do know Finance Director Grimm, uh, is one of the staff members without one and also Council Member Chumperlin. So, um, John, I'm not sure if you wanted me to order you one or if you're okay using your personal one, but if so, just let me know this week and I can get both those ordered at the same time. Um, in addition to that, as you know, and approved earlier in the meeting, there have been two resignations in our police department. Uh, the positions were posted last Friday and we advertised for two police officer positions. Um, originally when the position was posted on Friday, uh, we included a hiring range from step one to step four of the step scale. Um, not including the longevity steps, which starts after three years of employment. After, uh, discussing with Chief Falls this morning, we have revised the advertised salary range to include all steps in the pay scale, um, to hopefully set us apart from others advertising without longevity pay. Including these longevity steps is really aimed at enticing prospective candidates and geared towards recruiting more experienced officers. Um, it also gives the city flex, flexibility when discussing wage options, options with potential candidates. So, uh, those two positions will remain open until June 25th. And once we have those two, um, on board, we will begin advertising for the sergeant position. So we'll keep the council informed if there's any other important information pertaining to the hiring process from here. And that's about it for me.
Thank you, Ally. Council, any questions for Ally? Okay. Um, so we move on to Gary.
Yep. Uh, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, Council, Mike just wanted me to give you guys an update. Uh, we had our meeting for, uh, both the Hennepin County, Tony Road 62 and Tony Road 92 projects today. Uh, they are currently working on Tony Road 62 in Eden Prairie. Um, and once that is done, then they will be moving into Minatrista, St. Bonnie area to work on 92 from Highway seven all the way to Tony Road six. Um, it's going to be quite the closure. I mean, it'll be, uh, approximately 10 weeks. Um, when they do start, the first, they're looking at the end of July, they'll be doing the culvert work. And they will also, uh, then be working in St. Bonnie on all their ADA compliance for the crosswalks. Um, talking to Josh at, uh, the lead construction supervisor for the county, we are going to post our Highland Road, uh, with, they, they will post it for us. Uh, no trucks to turn on that road, um, and leave the truck traffic off. They'll also post that it's going to be a weight restricted road. We will post that at four tons, uh, just to keep the heavy truck traffic off that road because everybody's going to be using that for a shortcut through there. Um, since 92 is going to be closed, that's where they're going to go. They're not going to follow the detour if they know the area. So, um, just wanted to give you an update on that. Once it gets a little closer and we know what's happening, uh, with it, uh, we'll give you, you know, more detailed information. The other subject, uh, that I want to bring up, and I know it's not going to, uh, sit well with everybody, is our water demand situation on the south side of town. Um, Mike Pollock, as you know, is our water operator. He was in, uh, uh, Friday morning, early Saturday, Sunday, again this morning, I'm sure tomorrow, with the heat demand, our water demand, or with the heat, I should say, our water demand has gone up tremendously. We are pumping at a steady rate. Um, the, uh, um, with, with the, with this added heat so early, it's really wearing on the system there. Um, our tower at peak is 30 feet is what we have in there. And I'll be pushing, you know, it's a three or a $400,000 gallon tank. Um, during the mornings, we're pushing down to, this, this morning, we got it on to 18.1 feet. Um, that's a significant water usage. That is with both, uh, new wells, six and seven pumping into the water treatment plant and running along with well three supplementing the system. That is, it's, it's, um, fluoride and chlorine treated, but it does not go through the plant. So basically what we consider quote unquote untreated water that does not go through the treatment plant, it is running at a steady pace. Um, we have had, when we looked this morning, there was 19.1 hours on the filters. Um, they're due for backwash. We cannot backwash them, um, because the tower levels do not steady out until almost two o'clock in the afternoon is when we build up enough to get there. We need four to six hours to backwash. Unfortunately, at two o'clock, as people start to come home, water demand goes up again in the evening and we would not have enough time. We would definitely be hurting for water supply. Um, talked to Mike today. I do have numbers here. If anyone wants to know how long the well's been running as compared to last year, what we've been pumping. I mean, last month alone, um, we pumped almost 17, uh, uh, well, 1.7 million gallons out of the, out of six and seven. That was just, you know, and that's a, you know, pretty high for just that. I mean, it's going to start increasing. Um, I know people are not going to like to hear this, but we might have to be talking a complete watering band, uh, on the south side of town. I mean, it just, there's just no fire protection. I mean, when it gets down to 18 feet on a 400,000 gallon tank, you're probably talking 100,000 gallons or less in the tank. While we keep some steady pressure to the line, not enough for fire protection. So, um, the other thing that we're really going to have to start, uh, looking at discussing is when we get a second tower online, if we can't fill one with this system, I don't believe we're going to fill two. We really need to start evaluating when the other well and treatment plant is going to go on, online. Cause right now with the steady demand and increased housing, we're not going to be able to sustain this.
We, for sure, we need, um, another, uh, well pump, you know, and then, and that would probably come first. And then you'd add your, um, treatment plant as soon as you can after that. So, yeah.
One thing I, one thing I like to bring up, Madam Mayor, is we are getting a lot of calls again, it, it's like the old days for dirty water. Um, with well three, I mean, and even six and seven, as it's coming into the plant, there's not enough time for the aquifer to settle. Um, you know, in between run, pumps it up. So we're still, we're bringing up, you know, and it's all heavy iron and water here. I mean, it's aesthetics is all it is. I mean, it's iron in the water. It's the aesthetics of it. But, you know, when people are buying, you know, in this area, you know, they're not going to get the same, you know, water quality that they, that they had maybe come from somewhere else. So it's, the calls are starting to ramp up. I just, you know, want to make you aware of that. So. that they had maybe come from somewhere else. So it's, the calls are starting to ramp up. I just, you know, wanna make you aware of that. So.
So when, Gary, when do you make the decision or who makes the decision to do a watering ban?
Um, that would be, Mike and I discussed it. That would be up to the city council to make that decision.
Okay. So what you're saying though, is we're already kind of at a critical level for the South Water Tower and the south, south and southeast, southwest area. W- would we want to make that decision to- tonight then?
Uh, Mike, your opinion, can we, can we do that tonight yet?
Well, I'm not exactly sure if this is a council decision or not. I mean, I would certainly seek the input of the city council. But, um, and I think tonight with the point of having Gary talk about the issue was just to forewarn you that in case the situation with the water tower, the water in the water tower getting lower than where it is now, uh, because we're supposed to have hot weather, you know, high eighties, low nineties for the next week or so. I mean, I don't, you know, this is unusual for June, but, you know, it is June. We still have July and August to go. So, um.
Well, what I'm thinking is if the council is okay with authorizing you and or Gary to make that determination. Because my concern is we wanna be able to give our, I mean, sure, we wanna water our lawns. But if you have to choose between taking a shower and watering your lawn, you're gonna probably choose to have cooking water and showering water versus watering your lawn. So.
And putting out fires.
Make sure. Exactly. So I think we need to at least, uh, my opinion is say, you guys have to make that determination based on the water level. So let me, let me pose the question to counsel. Um, any thoughts here? I'll, I'll go to John first.
I think you need to, um, obviously need to look at the big picture. Uh, the water level gets that low, everybody's gonna suffer. Uh, and these hot conditions also predicate the chance for a fire. Don't have to be a house fire. It could be a gra- grass fire. And if we can't put it out, we have a big issue. I agree. So your lawn gets brown, but do you want everything in the whole neighborhood to be brown because it burnt? I think we need to, to give the city the capability of making that decision and issuing watering bans if necessary.
Okay. And, um, I'll go to Kathleen?
Yeah. I mean, we need to make sure we've got water to fight the fires now. Are we sure there's not a leak in a line or anything anywhere causing the water level to drop?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can fix that.
We have to totally, unfortunately.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta do what we gotta do. I know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's leaking out everybody's sprinkling system. So.
Yeah.
Well, funny enough, I know over the weekend, somebody hit a sprinkler head in our neighborhood on Kings Point Road and it was, it was going for hours. So.
Oh, no. Geez. Okay. All right. And Anne, you're okay or where are you?
Yeah, I'm okay. Is there some way to tell people how long we think we're gonna have to do something like this?
Um, it's a good question. Um, generally you wait till the, the weather changes. So it's not so blasted hot. And we're, uh, all inside in our air-conditioned homes instead of outside, cause it's, you know, 99 like it was on Saturday or whatever it was. So.
Yeah, but are we talking a week? Are we talking two weeks? Or are we talking months?
I, I have no idea. I, I, I just, I can't, I can't, I mean, I can look at a long-range forecast. And if it starts to trend down, we could probably pull it off if, if we do put it on. So.
All right.
Uh, if we get a few days of rain and everybody kinda stops watering their lawn for a while, we can hopefully put it back on. But, and I got a feeling we just got more of these as the time goes on here. So.
Yeah. So you can put it on. Yeah. The question is how, you know, if you put it on, take it off, put it on, take it off, kinda thing.
That's the hard thing to do.
Um, right. That's a hard thing to do. But on the other hand, you don't wanna leave it on forever, um, if you don't have to. So, and then it's the communication part that's the issue too. So.
Yep.
We'll have to figure that out. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, as we kinda monitor the weather, water, uh, pattern for our tower, we'll just keep an eye on it. And if, uh, Gary and I, and maybe in consultation, try to, uh, and we've, we've determined that, you know, this is, this is pretty, pretty dire straits. We'll probably email or call council members and say, we're gonna put it on and we'll just, I don't have an end date maybe, but you know, a week, two weeks. I don't know. I, the idea is not to put it on. But, you know, if, if, if the circumstances are such, I think we might have to. So.
Okay. Yep. All right.
You know, we're talking about it tonight, but I think you're gonna hear other cities start to talk about this. We're not unique. So we're gonna have stresses on our water system. A lot of cities are gonna have stresses on their water system. So.
And in fact, I've already gotten an email from other, uh, other mayors asking what our cities are do- what our cities are doing, uh, regarding that. So no, other cities are looking at it too. Yep. All right. Well.
Madam.
Yep.
Madam, if I may just add something. And Mike, um, in our engineer, Ms. Falsky just sent me a message and says, actually, our city code says that the city administrator does have the authority to implement the watering ban. It's, uh, such, it's, uh, 700.33 subdivision, subsection four is what she's got noted here. So, um.
Okay.
She found it there. So, yeah, we could do that. But yeah, I mean, I would like to work with Mike. Well, I can talk with Mike tomorrow morning, Mike, if that's possible. Let's kinda make a game plan. We can let you know what's going on. I've got numbers. I've been, we've been watching this. So we kinda know what's happening. So.
Yeah. And like I said, I'll, I'll keep the council informed on what's going on. I wouldn't just pull the trigger without letting you know. So.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Um, and then just one other quick thing. David, um, I think you said there is a planning commission meeting in June.
Yes, that is correct.
And, uh, earlier today I was talking with David and one of the items or may- maybe the only item on there is something, uh, refresh my memory, David, something that was at the planning commission before?
Yes, the item, uh, there is an item that was tabled and will be on this next meeting. That is correct.
Okay. So my question is Kathleen, since you were there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. It's, you kinda know the most of the story already. It would seem more appropriate if you can finish that off. So, all right. Th- thank, thank you. All right. Um, so with that, I think we'll move to council reports. I will try and be brief here so you can get onto your hot evening. Um, uh, so, um, we'll start our meeting at five, pre- um, probably, and we'll be talking, um, work session next time on the 21st. Uh, I will be attending the Northwest League and this is a first in like a year and a half, all, everybody in-person meeting. And then on Thursday, Anne and I and staff, as Mike mentioned, will be, um, attending the, uh, meeting with MediaCom. And that brings me to one other, uh, thing. So Anne and I are gonna be attending that broadband meeting. I'd like to ask the council's blessing, if you will, to designate Anne and myself to be on this, um, I'm gonna call it an ad hoc, um, broadband committee so that, um, we have the authority to just go to these meetings if need be. Um, is that okay with every, and I already asked Anne and she said she's fine with that. So I'm just asking the rest of you, are you okay? Uh, John, Pam?
I'm fine with that.
Kathleen? Okay. Yep. All right. John?
Yes.
Okay. And then the only other thing too, kind of wanting your blessing. Um, Kathleen has been, uh, going to the fire district meetings. Uh, well, we only attended one, but nonetheless. And, um, so I'd like to ask the council to, again, if you will, informally appoint Kathleen and myself because it's mayors and then a council member to the fire district meetings that mound and St. Bonnie and Minatrista and, and, um, I think Spring Park are gonna be hopefully engaging in soon. Is that, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Pam? Okay. And, um, Kathleen, you're on board, right?
Yep.
Okay. Good. All right. And then, um, next Monday, I will also be attending another, um, in-person, regional council of mayors meeting, again, the first in many months. So it sounds like we're starting to get back to normal and write normal routines again. So looking forward to that. That's all I have and I'll move on to Pam.
Um, I've got a couple of things. Uh, first of all, going back to Gary, County Road 92 is gonna be worked on, uh, starting to be worked on soon. Um, do you know when the closure on County Road 15 in mound will be reopened by any chance?
I do not. No. I would assume you.
I don't even know where to drive anymore.
Yeah.
You know what? Um, actually, actually I believe, you know what? If I remember right, Pam, don't quote me in this, but I think it opened up today. I think they pulled everything from.
Okay. Good to know.
In that area. So I think they're doing, I think they were done with, uh, what I heard is I think they were done with the water line. And I think it's open now that you can sneak through that way.
Okay. Cause re- really, if you think about it, you know, the Highway 12, uh, is closed. So they're diverting all the traffic now, uh, onto six, which it's, it gets really bad. So, and now they're working the 92. I mean, it's overkill here.
Yeah.
So, um, who knows about mound? Okay. Um, WCC meeting is coming up on the 17th. I just got a notice on that. Um, the only other thing is, um, on Allison's, uh, engineering update, way at the very bottom, the last comment under trails, uh, there was a statement that she said, um, that, uh, she is wondering if, uh, we should look at, uh, improvement project, uh, approach for the, uh, trails and for parks. And I think that's probably, I know we've got so much going on here, but I'd like to see some kinds of a, a plan of, um, you know, where we're gonna start spending on money on the parks. I know Jennings is hot, you know, this year. But where is our priorities gonna be for next year and so forth? Kinda like what we did to road maintenance. So, um.
Kinda like a three to five-year plan?
Yep.
Pam, cut, okay. All right. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Just my suggestion. It was on her, uh, updates and I think it was a good idea that we start looking at that.
Well, I might suggest that we kick it back to the park commission first and have them take a look. And I know they look annually at things, but maybe they can come up with a three to four-year plan. Maybe that would be, and then present it to the council. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Um, that's all I had.
Good. All right. And, um, let's see. John?
I attended the May 20th, Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting. At that meeting, the commission approved our 2022 budget. Uh, we kept the total assessments to the six cities the same. 131,800 in total. It's been that way since 2020. So third year in a row, we kept it. Uh, however, as those you in the know are aware, the individual amounts to the city ver- varies each year because of the fair market value of the, all the properties that are in the Pioneer Sarah Creek. This year, our, for Minatrista, our total assessment will be 15,245 dollars, basically. That's an increase of 345 from the year before. The year before, just to show you how these fluctuations take place, we actually dropped by 484 dollars. So, uh, it just fluctuates up and down. We were, we, would you believe of the six cities, our increase of 345 was the biggest move this year. So you never know. And our June meeting will be coming up on the 17th. So I'll be attending, uh, again on the June 17th, the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, John. And Anne?
Um, I attended the St. Bonnie, um, fire department meeting. It was a lot of fun. I liked meeting the other council members from the other cities. Um, Chief Anderson is really delightful. Um, they need badly, they need a washing machine because they only have one that it takes a half hour to do one suit. And they've got 28 fire people and granted, not 28 fire people go to every fire, but they can only do one at a time. So they need $12,000 to get wa- get a washing machine that can do two of them. So I was trying to think up something because they were making comments that local activities like bake sales and whatever, that it doesn't raise enough money. So I'm wondering if we don't wanna do a GoFundMe page locally somehow and do something to raise that money.
Um, yeah. I mean, couldn't the fire department do that?
Yeah, they can.
Yeah. I mean, that's, yeah. Yeah, right. Right. Not a bad idea. If, if that's allowed. I mean, I would assume so. But, yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say that I'm, I'm sure Mr. Beatty might be able to help me out here. But I know some of the fundraising efforts that St. Bonnie has done in the past, they've utilized the, I don't know if they call it the auxiliary or whatever. It's the spouses, girlfriends, boyfriends, whatever of, and it's a charitable organization and they've done the fundraising, I think, to avoid exactly what the mayor just mentioned. You know, you don't wanna, you know, if a public entity is go doing a GoFundMe page, I'm not sure if that's allowed. But Mr. Beatty, I wanna, I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds here, but, um, does, to me, my, it doesn't pass my smell test. That's just my, my take on it.
Yeah. Uh, this is Ron Beatty. I have never looked at that, but my sense of it is exactly what Mr. Brony is saying would be a better approach.
So the auxiliary maybe could do the GoFundMe page. Okay.
Yeah. That, you know, there might be a way for them to do it versus the actual city fire departments or the St. Bonnie fire department. You know, they're always, people are gonna say, you already get our taxes. Why do you need a GoFundMe page kinda thing? So. Uh, but, you know, it's a charitable organization doing it on behalf of the fire. Great.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And, okay. Anything else, Anne? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, and Kathleen?
Um, just that I attended the planning commission meeting and two of the items came up tonight, which we talked about. The, um, uh, the project with Paul, um, and then the, um, the one house on Highland where we, um.
Yeah, on Highland, right.
And then the third one is about a pool, which we will be talking about beginning of the end of this month. So that'll come.
And they, and Kathleen, they may not be able to fill the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, really. All right. All right. Well, thank you all for, um, all the meetings and, um, all the work you do. You're doing a great job, all of you. I really appreciate it and appreciate your input at the meetings. They're very helpful and very, um, constructive. Um, I think, um, you're all doing a great job, including staff. So thank you staff as well. With that, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can be adjourned.
Could I, uh, uh, ask one question?
Sure.
This is Joe Fake and I'm sorry, I tuned in just after my, uh, appointment and I didn't know how you voted on it.
On which one?
On the County Road 92 and, uh, uh, a Highland property.
Oh, we, we voted for it. Yes. It, it, yes, it went through. Yep. Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. I, I just tried to get a bit in here before I had to hang up.
Sure. Yep. You're welcome. Have a good evening. All right.
You too.
So with, with that, then do I have a motion for adjournment?
So am I.
Pam?
Pam and Kathleen, I think. Okay. Um, so all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye. Lisa, Pam?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Five oh. Again, good meeting. Thank you all and have a great rest of the night. Bye.